Everybody stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take the roll.
O'Connor.
Here.
Morrison.
Here.
Holmes. DeZiel.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
All right, everybody have a chance to take a look at the minutes.
Move to approve.
Well, I'm sorry, no, you know, I apologize, I apologize, that's in the consent.
The other committee.
Comments and suggestions from citizens, is there anyone here who has a comment? And if you do, if you make sure it's something that is not on the agenda, otherwise we'll wait until that point, and if you have a comment, you can comment on the agenda item, keep it brief. Any comments? Any comments? Any comments? What was that portion of the agenda? Consent agenda.
Consent agenda items for tonight's meeting are as follows: approve the meeting minutes from the August 19, 2019, regular council meeting; approve the claims in the amount of $1,899,632.31; approve the regular license, regular operator license applications as listed on the issue sheet; approve the temporary operator license applications as listed on the issue sheet; approve the temporary beer/wine application submitted by St. Patrick Parish for the Holy Smoke BBQ to be held on September 14, 2019; approve the bid for Pember Companies in the amount of $68,379 for the St. Croix Street sanitary sewer project; approve the final development plans for Hudson Hospital EMS Garage at 2800 Center Drive, Hudson Memorial Hospital, Inc.; approve the appointment of city engineer.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve, roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
Holmes, I'm sorry. DeZiel.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggitt.
Yes.
Hall. Yes.
Motion's approved, timely setup or startup rather for extension for Omerta, 523 Second Street.
Okay, on June 3rd, council approved the issuance of the Class B liquor and Class B beer license to Omerta at 523 Second Street, and the 90-day timely startup for that business has expired, and Mr. Paul Rhodey is here requesting an extension for that.
Hi, Paul Rhodey, 501 Second Street, for Agave Home is 9 East Canyon. State plans, we just got the HVAC approved on Thursday, and we're waiting on plumbing, but everything else is ready to go. In hindsight, you know, Agave, we took over Twist of Grill, and that was a lot easier, just deal with the city. When you're starting from scratch, you gotta deal with the state and play with their rules and timelines, so that's where we're at.
Do you know how long it'll take for the state to approve it?
September 22nd, 23rd. Jen told me today, so that's where we're at. Right after that, we'll be on plan commission and ready to go.
Okay, I'll move to approve the extension.
I appreciate that.
How long extension?
Oh, you're asking for 90 days?
Yeah, 90 days.
Okay, 90 days.
Second, Ted.
Motion second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Discussion possible action on creating and ordinance permitting mobile food vendors in the city of Hudson.
So I've received several requests for obtaining a food truck permit, ice cream trucks over the last several months. We don't have anything in our code that currently permits this, and so I've gathered information from different municipalities that do have, that do permit this, and so pretty much I'm just coming to you to seek for a direction on whether or not this is something that you want to pursue, an ordinance, or, I don't know, but I've had inquiries about it, so I figure it's good to come to you and see what your thoughts about it are.
So, one of the reasons, when Jenny and I had talked about this, and one of the reasons I wanted to put this on the agenda is because we're coming into the period of time right now that we had set aside for reviewing concessions at the beach, at the beach house. And so, we had, obviously, we had another difficult summer with the high water, I don't know exactly how many days the beach was closed, but our vendor down there, I think last time we talked about this, was doing like popcorn and stuff like that, without any like hot food burgers, dogs, that kind of thing, and the discussion was, we'd like to have hot food down there as well, and cold food, I think for that matter, ice cream and stuff like that. So, I thought, it's been, as I've thought about this, and like pretty much right after that discussion, I thought probably the ideal situation for the beach house in particular is a food truck, because they can just drive down there whenever, they've got all their stuff onboard, and they don't have to worry about keeping freezers and refrigerators going, perhaps when the electricity's out because the water's high, they can just drive down there and move out when they need to. So, that was part of my thinking on putting this on the agenda, because I thought that would be a real good fit for down there. I don't know how many, how many people, vendors you've had to contact you on this, but, and if we were to go down that road for, for the beach house, it could be exclusive, it doesn't have to be exclusive, if you've got three vendors, they can trade off. But at the same time, and I've asked Kathy to check into this, one of the conditions that I would like to have on any food truck that would go down there, or any food truck that we would consider anywhere in the city, is that they also have to have a restaurant operating here in the city.
So, is it illegal right now for the ice cream truck to go through the city? We've had, we have them going through.
Do they have a direct seller's permit? I mean, we don't have anything requiring a permit for food trucks. We have certain park rules, you know, where they would need to get permission or something like that, but that doesn't mean they're prohibited, it just means we don't have a permit. So, I don't know, I'd have to look through the, all the ordinances, but I would think they would maybe need a direct seller's permit, because they are direct selling.
Right.
Sales in city parks are, transient sales aren't permitted, so they wouldn't be able to do it in city parks, but if someone was just on private property.
Yeah, if they're going through the residential neighborhood.
Yeah, for ice cream trucks, but I'm also thinking, I've seen food trucks, for example, in River Falls, well, they usually park in a parking space near, say like a brew pub or something like that.
Yes, I've seen that too.
It's somewhat similar to the trolley, we didn't have any permit required, and I think because they were regulated by the state DOT and so forth, the council decided for that, not to set up a permit system. This might be a little bit different, because they could be taking up space on the street, I don't think they would be allowed to do that without a permit, you know, it's kind of a different thing, but.
Do they have to get licensed from the state in order to operate?
I haven't, actually, when Jenny called me, I just said, you know, let's float it at the council first to see if the council's interested in looking into it. I would think they would need something for their cooking and serving food, but I don't know that, I haven't looked into it.
You know, we've, the folks that have restaurants downtown have worked very hard at bringing downtown Hudson to what we know it is today. I don't think it's fair to us, and I've had calls from the restaurant people downtown that says, why are you gonna allow somebody come in on our streets and offer $10, no employees, and take business out of, I mean, they compete for every dime as it is downtown. And it's been a struggle lately, because there's more down there, so they're concerned about that coming out of their profits as well. I don't, I don't not like food trucks, but I don't want them like, if you go to St. Paul in the Miras Park, they've got them lined up all the way around, you go to any one of those restaurants and talk to them, they're upset, because they're taking the client away for $10. These guys have worked hard to bring Hudson to a level that we all know and enjoy today, and I think it would be a travesty for us to have a truck come in and take that money away from them that they've worked so hard for. I'm not opposed to a special permit to let them into a park, one or two, or something like that, but to have them carte blanche on the street in front of our restaurants that have worked so doggone hard, I don't agree with it, and I won't support anything like that.
Well, then we need to have some kind of a regulation to prevent that.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, weren't you saying it would be, your idea would be that it would be only open to current restaurants that are operating in Hudson?
Yeah, I've talked with Kathy to see if that's allowable, and she doesn't, I, you're not gonna speak for you.
I'd say I'm likely not, I mean, I will look into it, but generally, the city's not supposed to regulate for purposes of restraining competition, that's just not one of the functions of the city, so.
So, well.
I mean, I have to look into it, but I think that, that is an issue there.
You know, and I agree with, with Randy on, on the food trucks here, that's why I said, if, the only way I could support it is if it's somebody that already has a restaurant here. Downtown Minneapolis lost a McDonald's, a very vibrant McDonald's, where does that happen? And that happened because of food trucks out on the street. I, I agree, I don't want to see that happen, we've got good restaurants, they run great businesses, and they have put a lot of time, energy, and money into making sure that they have a quality business, and people come here for that reason. And I'm worried about food trucks in general being regulated, as far as quality of food, and, you know, just who comes through to check their trucks like they come through and check on the restaurants. So, that's why, two things, number one, I could easily support a food truck down at the beach, because I think that's appropriate, I think that's the only way we're gonna make concessions work down there. And then, number two, if we are gonna approve even down there, I would like it to see it be a restaurant that's already doing business here in Hudson.
So then we, for that one, we would have to probably have a contract.
I think so.
Or a system, yeah, of rotating, I mean, if the city wanted to set up something like that.
I stand with Randy on this, I think it's really unfair to our current restaurants that have worked so hard to make downtown so vibrant and attract so many people to come to Hudson, I think, to, you know, I'm hearing they make the requirement that they have a restaurant, but that really pits them against each other, because maybe one of our current restaurateurs can afford a food truck, or it's in his or her business model already, or, but we're, we would be placing really a burden on those businesses to have to come up with a, a business model that a food truck would be part of their model now, and I don't think that's our position, I don't, I don't think that's what a city council should, should do to the local businesses.
Well, I think that it's important for us to understand what we can and can't allow here in the city, and so I would suggest that we, in fact, I'll make the motion that we have Catherine look into it, so that she knows what we can and can't do, so that she can make recommendations.
And what would you think about then adding to that motion to send it, those results to like a committee? I think, I think this needs vetting more before it comes to this table.
What committee would you?
Probably finance.
Finance or planning?
Or.
Or public, I mean, I'm thinking you don't want to allow, and there's probably something in the ordinances, don't allow people to monopolize parking spaces, that's where I've seen it in other cities, where they, you know, park for an evening and are allowed, you know, given a permit just to do that by the city, and if you don't want to allow your streets and parking spaces to be taken up, then that's something you can certainly regulate.
I'm just hearing a lot of issues, so there's parking issues, I don't want a food truck on concerts in the park, because our businesses are needing that night.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't want that, there's just so many ramifications, I think it needs to be vetted out at a place that's not this room, and then make some recommendations to us, maybe even our new city administrator has experience, we need to do some research on, you know, what are the impacts to the, to the local businesses that are already established.
What about asking the Chamber of Commerce to take a look at it and make a recommendation to us?
She's here.
Is that something that you'd be interested in developing an opinion on?
Hi, Mary Claire Potter with the Hudson Chamber of Commerce, I, yes, we'd be happy to take a look at that, I think, as others have mentioned, I mean, you have bricks and mortar here who pay property taxes, pay employees, and those dollars come back to this community. I've been in communities, when I worked in Minneapolis, where they allowed all these food trucks to be on 8th Street, and it closed a number of bricks and mortar restaurants downtown, so it can be very devastating. I think part of the issue too is, do we need to have food and so forth down in the beach house? Because even having one food truck, I mean, we already have restaurants and so forth that provide all of that food, so, but if it's a safety issue, if it helps to have something down in the beach house that eliminates some strategy, I think that would be a question for the chief, but I think there's just so many issues on this one to look at, that I appreciate your thoughtfulness on it, and I think it's time to reflect and come back, and the chamber certainly could offer an opinion on that too.
Do any of our businesses, local restaurants, have food trucks? The only one I can think of is Big Guys seems to have what looks like a food truck, but.
Peter Pitt has a food truck, the Fiesta Cancun has a food truck, you see, they've been at the Marina twice, so, and that's it, and Big Guys, but they're not from Hudson, but those are the two that I'm aware of.
Joyce, to your point, it looks like under 124-2, that sales are not permit, no direct or transient sales or solicitation shall be allowed on any public street or public parking lot, so that ice cream truck is illegal.
Okay.
Be the Grinch.
Yeah, I was gonna tell that.
Okay, I'll call the police.
Just wait until there's no line at the truck. So, what committee, or committees?
Well, the other, the other point I want to make at this, if you look at 124.2, the current ordinance, right, it says, "Sales prohibited on public streets and public parking lots, except as provided in this chapter for community events approved by the common council and seasonal farmer's market." So I read that as, if I'm right on Catherine, I read that as the, there's leeway for the common council to approve an event, or within the current ordinance, say, a food truck could be brought in for X, Y, or Z, is that?
Well, I think community events are these festivals that are, take place in the parks primarily, it's not, they're recognized like booster days, or art in the park, those kinds of things, so it wouldn't be on a, or the beer thing in the park, they're approved in conjunction with those special events, not on a case-by-case basis, if you know what I'm getting at, except for the event as a whole.
But it should go to plan commission.
Planning commission?
Not that you want anymore, Mike, but I think it should be in plan commission.
Yes.
Are you making the motion, Randy?
Yeah, motion, Randy.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion second to send this issue to the plan commission, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motions approved. Communications recommendations from the mayor, there are a couple things, three things I want to talk about tonight. First of all, you all are aware of what happened with Water Gremlin, and so I wanted to give you the background on how, how this all happened, how we found out about it, and the work that was done as soon as we found out about it. I got, received a phone call from WCCO a week ago, last Thursday, I think, and, and they said that they wanted to get together with me, because they had information that they thought would be important and of interest to us here at the city. So I met with them, and they told me that at that moment, Water Gremlin was unloading trucks with equipment to do coating at one of our local manufacturers. So, Water Gremlin, I don't know if you saw all of the things that happened with the MPC and Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, but they were fined twice, they were told, first of all, that earlier in the year, I think February maybe, that they were polluting the air, and while the MPC, MPC knew that the chemical that they were using was a pollutant, they allowed them a certain standard, and found that they were exceeding that standard. They fined them, and then made an agreement with them, entered into an agreement with them, where they would use a different chemical. And so, once they started using that chemical, apparently that chemical was either leaking into the ground or being injected into the ground for disposal, and was creating ground pollution, soil pollution, at which point the MPCA came in, fined them again, and shut them down, shut down that part of their manufacturing. It's my understanding that Water Gremlin is the largest manufacturing in the world of sinkers, and if not the largest, one of the largest, as well as they have a process for battery terminals, leaded battery terminals, same thing, they've cornered the market on that. So the coating process that they use, the chemical process, is just the, like toward the end of the, the whole process for their manufacturing, so they were still manufacturing in White Bear Lake, but they were shipping the equipment over here to do the chemical process, their coating process. And so, the moment they told us about that, I contacted Kathy, and I contacted Mike Johnson, and they committed much of their next couple days to working through this issue. I know that there's a lot of stuff being said out there, that we at the council should have known about this, that our departments should have known about this, there was no way that we would have known about it, and probably the worst thing that happened is that they went and got a permit from the Wisconsin DNR to allow this to happen. And the Wisconsin DNR apparently was not apprised of the problems that they had had with Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, and issued this permit for them, that's the second time, if you recall, this year, that the Wisconsin DNR has issued a permit without contacting the city, the first time being the well up at Uline. So, suffice to say, I'm not happy about this, and, and they had a 30-day, a 30-day appeal process to appeal the permit, but what good is an appeal process if you, if you're not apprised of, notified of, the permit being issued in the first place? So we were coming very close to that, that appeal deadline, but fortunately, we never had to file an appeal, because the, the company that had agreed to lease space to Water Gremlin so they could do this, realized what was going on, and, and has committed that they're not going to be working up there on the hill, and we'll be talking about that in closed session a little bit later on tonight. Again, I want to reiterate, I can't say this strongly enough, Kathy and Mike did a great job in, in getting this stopped, number one, and number two is that this wasn't anything that fell through the cracks here, there was no way we would have known about this, there is no way, unfortunately, that we could have or should have known about this with the process that's in place for the issuing of the permit, doesn't seem right to me, and I've already talked to our, a local legislator about this, and, and he is talking to the DNR, in fact, the DNR has reached out to me today, and I haven't had a chance to call them back. So, I just want to give everybody the background, the history of what happened, and to assure the council as well as all Hudsonites, that that Water Gremlin process is not going to be happening here in Hudson, and the, the company that had leased them, the, the space in the first place, has come through in a big way, and said that's not gonna happen, and will be entering into a contract with them here, hopefully, we'll be talking about that later, and then hopefully we will pass that. So that's number one. Number two, you're gonna be hearing in the next, probably coming up in the next plan commission meeting, the word moratorium, we're gonna be considering moratorium on development over an annexation that's gonna affect Carmichael, and maybe, maybe extending that a little bit, but we've, we've come to the point now where, you've all heard this, even our, our engineer, highway engineer, traffic engineer has, has said, we've, we've hit the point where we're saturated over there, and so, we had a meeting with the DOT the other day, a couple representatives from the DOT came in, Senator Schochner was here, Representative Zimmerman was here, representative from the county was here, Mike and Mike were here, and, and we expressed our concern to, to the Department of Transportation that we need help over here on Carmichael, and we need help with the interchange, everything from probably south of the interchange all the way up at least to Vine, and we explained this to them in no uncertain terms, and, and our legislative delegation was also very, I think, forceful in, in their concern about, about the pressure that's put on our, our street over there, as well as the interchange, but more importantly maybe, or as importantly, is the fact that we are willing to now consider a moratorium being one of the economic engines for St. Croix County, and St. Croix County being an economic engine for all of the state of Wisconsin right now. This is an important issue, and one that we're hoping that they take seriously, and will sit down and try to work something out with us, and getting a, a long-term fix on Carmichael and the interchange, not just Band-Aid approaches like we've seen, and, like with the Atwood development, I don't want to sound disparaging, because they've really stepped up, I think, to commit $2 million to trying to correct that situation, but that is not a long-term fix. So, you're gonna be hearing that, and, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully you'll, you'll want to weigh in on that as well, and we'll hear what your thoughts are on this. And the third thing is that we are coming down now to the, to the end of the transition for EMS, as of September 9th, Lakeview will be taking over our EMS service, and I wanted to take this time to once again, thank all of the staff from EMS for what they've done over the decades in providing a great service to our community, and they have done a great job in, throughout this transition period, I know it's been tough, but they've really stepped up and done a great job for us, and once again, I cannot thank them enough, and tell them how much we appreciate what they have done for our community, they've been a great service for us, and I want to, again, reiterate, thank you very much. Anybody else?
I have one issue for our next agenda, it may need to just go to public works, but it's a memorial ordinance for the city, there was a memorial placed up in Prospect Park, and I believe staff just approved it without our knowledge, so we're not following our memorial policy we have for the city. That stuff should come, we start down that road, we're never gonna stop, so, I'd like to have that either go to public work or come back to city council, the memorial, you know what I'm talking about? People, I don't even know who this person is, it's right next to Silas, I don't, it just seems bad all around, so.
Okay. You want to decide now?
Public works.
Public works, all right, we'll just send it there. Anybody else?
Just to, the new administrator will be coming on, is that next Monday?
Oh, that's right, next Monday, yep.
September 9th, so that's how people know, yeah.
Anybody else? All right. Discussion possible action to convene in a closed session pursuant to A, Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to consider negotiating strategy regarding an agreement with BL Business Services LLC doing business as high-tech finishing where competitive or bargaining reasons require, and under Wisconsin Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Sub G, to confer with legal counsel regarding litigation in which the city is likely to become involved, and B, Wisconsin 19.85 Sub 1 Sub E, to consider negotiating strategy with respect to a lease agreement for leasing space to Lakeview Hospital for EMS services, services, and regarding possible sale of ambulances to Lakeview Hospital where competitive or bargaining reasons require, and I guess that's it, okay? Is there a motion?
Move to go into closed session.
Second.
Motion second to go into closed session, roll call.
Morrison.
Yes.
DeZiel. Weber.
Yes.
Atkins Hoggatt.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Motion's approved, go into the closed session, we'll step across the hall. Back in, open session. We got two items that we discussed in, uh, closed session.
So I would have a motion, uh, to approve the agreement between the city of Hudson and High Tech, to have High Tech not work with Water Gremlin in the future and not use the list of chemicals named in the agreement.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
And I have another motion to approve the lease agreement between the city of Hudson and Lakeview EMS for leasing the public safety building for ambulance usage.
And the space in City Hall for EMS purposes.
Thank you, so I'd amend that to public safety building and the space in City Hall, thank you.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion's approved.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned, thank you, everybody.